I'd call me to order. Now I'll call Ms. Shefflin to do the roll call.
Mr. Bryson?
Here.
Mr. Coleman?
Here.
Mr. Dove?
Yeah.
Dr. Decker?
Here.
Mr. Breeden?
Here.
Mr. Gunn?
Here.
Mr. Martin? Mr. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Mr. Sutherland?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Maggi, color?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Dr. O'Kelly?
Here.
Before we move on, just one thing that I want to ask. The one thing we've learned, and we now live in the world of DC and AC for COVID after COVID, that we've learned we have plenty of means so people can participate. But try to, if you can't be here, or you're going to have to, you need to either have a phone hookup or do it via Zoom, WebEx, whatever. Try to let the person at the card's office know, at least five days beforehand, so they can make the arrangements and make sure we're in a facility that can in fact accommodate that. Next, we go to the minutes, the November 11, 2021 minutes. Do we have any additions or corrections? Here, Dunn, do I have a motion to approve minutes?
So, second.
First, we have motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We now go to committee reports versus executive affairs. It's a resolution 01 dash 22. It's a resolution. This comes from the exec committee unanimously. So we need a second freezing tuition for another year. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, I'm a supporter. All in favor, say aye. Well, there's got any discussion. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any needs? I just have it therefore unanimously. Go now to resolution 02 dash 22, which is a resolution for naming of the Dr. Edward Floyd, Medical Education Sorcerer. That comes unanimously from the exec committee to have a second. Second, Mr. Jackson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any needs? I just have it unanimously. Now we go to resolution 3 dash 22, which is a resolution for naming of Stephen Gately-Galleri, which we are in currently. That comes unanimously from the exec committee to have a second. Second, I'm a supporter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All pass unanimously. Now we go to executive affairs. Mr. Dove?
Thank you, sir. We have a little meeting. We have 14 pages of information. And Mr. Chair, I might have that down in the hall.
You can do that after me.
We had some impressive reports about the chair of the board on the election and on the new programs or different programs. The fact that they were pretty good. They had a new road management also getting along on the part of people making the number of the applications for next year. At this point, 30% higher than they were. So we are really excited about that. The scholarships have been awarded, especially the male scholarships to students incoming. The other whole scholarships, we had 200 applications, and we have about 30 of those. And that's tuition, food, fees, and tuition fees and everything. But all of our scholarship students, which are primarily based on me, we have 179 undergraduates and 69 graduates who receive a decent percent of the investment. And pre-registration, Nick Steel, Starks, and Lox 23. There is a lot recorded on the international program, something like that, where they have released three new respective departments in operating this international program and looking forward to implementing. But those, the travel specialists are picking back up since COVID. Some are planned. And one interesting thing that comes out of the meeting, we have 57 F1D students on campus and six graduates. We have two reservations, Mr. Chair. With the meeting, if you go to unanimously, the full board, first one is 04 dash 22, approved in the Bachelor of Science and Art at Francis Mary.
That motion comes 04 dash 22, resolution approved in the Bachelor of Science, four through Francis Mary, comes unanimously from academic affairs and accreditation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is that done?
The second resolution from 05 dash 22 is approved in the Bachelor of Science and Mass Communications at Francis Mary and my committee also approving all samples.
Resolution 05 dash 22 is a resolution approved in the Bachelor of Science and Mass Communications for Francis Mary University, comes unanimously from the academic affairs and accreditation. Have a second? Second, I'm a supporter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That stands with Dr. Dove.
We have reports from College of the Arts, board reports. School of Business, School of Business have both the pages of faculty research. And we were told previously enough that this has picked up because so many of the terminal presses closed down during COVID and they're now picking back up. So it's wonderful to see that. School of Education, reported also. We, the three grant programs that we approved previously, Mr. President, I guess it's okay to be slightly more appropriate if you think that in the CAG, I understand?
Let's assume so, okay?
Yes, sir. And there's a lot of excitement about that. Also, School of Education is looking at the beginning to give out a master's program as an option for graduates of school education to go and get a master's degree in that area. Health Sciences, again, a lot of things going on in Health Sciences. We're told that part of the situation is that so much is changing in Health Sciences. The university faculty is, especially has had some curriculum changes that we don't understand. They're also looking at a patient, very accomplished, and now forward to forward in that, so we're looking forward to hearing about that at the terminal presses. And, Chair, please not forget.
Thank you, Dr. Dove. Any questions, Dr. Dove? Hearing no questions, Dr. Dove, we go to alumni development. Development alumni, I'm a supporter.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, our community bits. We've heard reports from more outstanding professional institutions with answers about bits, recent bits, upcoming bits. Ducks, they've been very successful this evening, about 400 people in attendance. Upcoming events include the Education Foundation Scholarship Reception. They'll be coming up in March 22 at 6:00 p.m. in University Commons. And the Education Foundation Golf Club, which will be coming up April 27 in South Carolina. And then Swamp Fox Athletic Auction will be on May 19. We've been recipients of several scholarships recently. Thomas Martin Baby and Alice Olton Baby Dowell Scholarship, Coach Griffin Dowell Scholarship, Dr. Paul Ellen, L. Henders, Dowell Scholarship, Juves Dowell Scholarship. Their generous donation was received by Dr. Lynn Prochoff in Dowell Scholarship. Beginning day was a very successful day, and we appreciate all of you that participated in that. The regional committee affairs reported that a naked crossover will have an exhibit here in this facility titled Urban Taliesin for Apple Washington D.C. And Performing Arts Center, Brown Ripley, that will be there on March 22, titled Concert of the Florence Symphony will be in April 11, Long Bay, Dallas, Atlanta. Center for Child, continued maintenance during rolling. Welcome to Governor, his leadership institute has 20 day participants this year. It's going very well. Fred Shabine, non-philosophical leadership institute, started up, called acceptable. Alumni Affairs, Director of Alumni Affairs, Daniel Ginnig, we already reported that the published concept is going very well. It's going to continue to have great participation. Apparently they've had several thousand responses and continue to work on that. Thank you everyone who participated in that. Alumni bits, we have a successful homecoming February 19. George Olton's participated. Night's a big night, alumni award tonight, Performing Arts Center, we're looking forward to that, and all those who've been big on there tonight, we're looking forward to that. Biology Alumni Acceptance will be on March 8, Freshwater Ecology Complex at 6:00 p.m. And that will be the first official bit at the conference center. And the School of Business Alumni Acceptance will be on March 29 at Performing Arts Center at 6:00 p.m. And I'll go with Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Backback. Any questions, Mr. Backback? Here, Dunn, we go to Finance and Facilities, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, everyone. The Finance and Facilities Committee met this afternoon. We were joined by Darrell Wiggins and Mr. Ralph Davis. You all should have received a copy of the review and budget summary report provided to you in an email a couple of weeks ago. Hopefully you had a chance to review that. There were no significant changes or trends since our last meeting in November. Revenues and expenses are at expected levels and state appropriations have been received. The increase in capital funds reflect the state appropriations for the building projects approved for the year. The increase in grants and scholarships reflects the additional funds appropriated for South Carolina Needs-Based Grants, which after you receive 3.2 billion dollars or just under 2 billion more than we did last year. Also, we'd like to present for consideration to the full board, resolution dash 06 dash 22 to approve an engineering facility. I'd like to give a little background of that if I could, Mr. Chairman. The committee would like to present resolution 06 dash 22 to approve an engineering facility. Current law requires board approval for university construction projects under $2 million and eliminates the multi-level project approval required for larger projects. The growth of the engineering programs requires the need for applied lab space. This addition will allow for further growth and development of these programs. The facility will be a pre-engineered building with an open workspace, large access door, ample infrastructure necessary for applied instruction for engineering students. The tentative location for the facility is adjacent to parking lot F, behind the grill, which provides convenient access. It will be designed to fit in with the area in an attractive manner. The facility will be funded from the Capital Maintenance Reserve Fund at a cost not to exceed $1 million. So with that, Mr. Chairman, we would like to present resolution 06 dash 22 to the full board, please.
Resolution 06 dash 22 to approve the engineering facility comes from the Finance and Facilities Committee unanimously. Have a second?
Second.
Hearing the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass unanimously, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The committee received a report regarding capital projects. The Freshwater Ecology Center is operational. The facilities team is working with the Executive Budget Office and the state engineer to facilitate approval for the School of Business, School of Education Building, and the Medical Education Consortium. The Smith University Center Innovation and Bonding should receive final approval from the state next month. Dr. Carter may touch on these briefly in his president's report. Lastly, the contracts for both the bookstore and dining services, both end this year. The selection for both are underway and should be finalized and ready for implementation by July 1. We had a couple of faculty, not faculty changes, but staffing changes. And one in particular that I wanted to recognize was Thomas Welsh, who many of you knew. He was here for many, many years at FMU since 1994. And Thomas took a position as Associate VP of Financial Services and assumed responsibilities related to budgeting in, I think, in Bangor, Maine. So we just wanted to thank him for all his years of service and certainly wish him well. Lastly, I just would like to thank our previous chairman of this committee, Trustee Gunn, for his service. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any questions, Mr. Jones? Hearing no questions, Mr. Jones, we now go to student life and athletes, Mr. Sutherland.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our committee met and received reports from initially Student Government Association, reported by AJ, the SGA president. They had February 28, the Black History Luncheon, and the speaker there was Senator Maya McLeod, who was running for governor, first female Black senator running. March 11, they had commuter appreciation day to try to help, and I think they're giving away some gift cards or gas, so that helps with things that during this time, the prices are so high. Some initiatives by the SGA for the spring semester is trying to revitalize new membership in Greek Life. So they're offering, they're going to develop a new member scholarship for Greek Life. They're also having, growing in awareness and membership in SGA. I had asked the question, what kind of percentage we were looking at? It's less than 5% that are involved in it. So Dr. Kennedy assured me that they're doing some good things, starting this season, changes in that area. Then Dr. Kennedy gave a report to us on student life. Turns out that they have, they've had good turnout for their annual MLK event on campus back in January. The CAF is Campus Activities Board, Karaoke Night, Bingo Night, Speed Dating Event, which I'm sure was fun to watch. Continuing the food truck on Thursdays. Homecoming with the Bonfire Spirit Day Block, obviously the coronation of the Homecoming King, when he hit the basketball game on February 19. There are 18 teams this year in the president's Hall. This is the fifth year of doing that. And this year was two Cinderella teams that ended up in the finals, and the accounting students won that. And that was just, yes, or two days ago, yes, yeah. Greek Life's had some really good recruitments and SGA initiatives probably helping with that, so that's good. They're holding a student film festival for short videos, film videos, 10 minutes or less, you have to use a cell phone. Dr. Kennedy said if anybody wants to see it, because they did this before and it was really fun, just email them and he will send you a link so you can see it. Lastly, for student life, the Arts International Festival is coming in April 9, 11 to 5. And we'll be, you know, music, entertainment, arts, also the cardboard race, which is, you know, the votes are made by the cardboard and duck head will be there. Then we received a report by athletic director, Murray Hartsthal. The golf team won the Wexford Plantation Intercollegiate Tournament, probably one of the better golf teams he's recorded in many, many years. Volleyball has conference champions for both the regular seasons and conference tournament, advancing to the first round of the NCAA. The men's soccer team, which he's told is quite a little talented team in a while, but had some disappointing losses, but they still won the regular season. They had a 10-win season with one title. They lost the final of the conference tournament. I think that's one of the disappointments. They felt like they had the talent to do it, we just didn't pull it off, didn't have a heart. Women's basketball played tonight at Wofford College in the conference tournament quarterfinals. Had a record of 16 and 12. 128 student athletes were named to the Swamp Fox Honor Roll, and now that has 3.0 or higher. 21 had a 4-point average. Also, Murray nominated Colin Door, the men's cross country and president of FMU Student Athletics, to the advisory board as Conference Carolina representative to the NCAA Division Two National Student Athletic Advisory Committee. He was accepted and will be going to Dallas to represent. And then you mentioned earlier about the Athletic Auction, I just say that again, May 19, put that on your calendar, you do not have to be in person, but they now do it online. We started that, it went very, very well. Murray has a goal of 60,000, 70,000 dollars a year. So please participate either in giving, no, getting people to give, or go online, or getting people to go online too as well, if that can't come in person. Just share that in my report, concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Sutherland. Any questions from Ms. Sutherland? Hearing none, before we go forward, I have neglected to do this, let me put this right there, the media's been notified according to the Cross-Prudent Information Act. When I move forward on our given agenda, Dr. Carter, call Dr. Carter from Preston's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Let me first of all compliment you on freezing tuition, fifth year in a row. I would also point out, I don't mean this in a nefarious way, but when this board freezes tuition, it freezes tuition and all fees, unlike some boards that may freeze tuition and triple the fees. I'm proud of you for doing that. The university is in good shape financially now. The truth of the matter is that allowing that flexibility on the part of our students and their parents to be able to borrow less money or to be able to spend less money on their tuition is critically important in times like this. I'm very proud of the action that you've taken. And I'd love to sit here and say, maybe we won't have to raise tuition for the next few years, maybe we can continue to take those actions. But let's not get ahead of ourselves yet, okay? Let's just focus on this year and maybe next year in terms of that expectation and that promise that we might extend to our parents and our students. Mr. Chairman, I'm deeply appreciative that you honored today two people who've served the university very, very well by naming facilities after them. And let me begin with Professor Steve Gailey, who taught art to our students for four decades at the university. Steve passed away late last fall. Last month, the university had a memorial service in honor of Steve, and many of us sit there and listen to former students stand up and talk about how their lives were changed by the education they received from Professor Gailey. By the introduction, he provided them, each of them, to the world of art. How absolutely appropriate that you would name the art gallery of the university here after Steve Gailey. He had an exhibit here early last fall, a couple months prior to his death. So I think Steve would approve highly of the actions you've taken today. I think the university approves highly of you providing this recognition and honor to a professor who served the university so well over the years. Dr. Floyd, where do I begin with Dr. Floyd? Do we talk about the 10 seviions of dollars that he's worked to provide us through the Dr. Bruce and Lee Foundation's chairman? Do we talk about his leadership on the Performing Arts Center or the support he provided on the Center for Health Sciences or this building? Do we talk about the Leatherman, the Q and G Leatherman Medical Complex? Do we talk about the 141 acres that Dr. Floyd essentially championed for us through the Bruce and Lee Foundation to create our Freshwater Ecology Center? You know, the interesting thing about Dr. Floyd is that he believes so fiercely and strong in this community about medical and health science education, and he believes very, very strongly about the power Francis Marion University could change the lives of men and women all around this region. And Eddie has been such a strong and fierce and aggressive proponent for us. Certainly during the 23 years I've been here, and I couldn't be more appreciative of what he's done. Naming that complex, naming that Circle Park building in honor of Dr. Floyd is absolutely the most natural thing in the world to do. And I suspect tomorrow, when people pick up the paper, pick up the morning news, Chris, and read that you've named that building after Dr. Floyd, many of them are going to think to themselves, of course, who else would they have named that? The only other thing I want to say about Dr. Floyd, and I want to bring my friend Hugh Leatherman into this conversation too. One of the great delights I've had the last couple of years, the last couple of decades, has been the ability to sit down together with people like Eddie Floyd and Hugh Leatherman, Stephen Marquilla, Frank Willis, and essentially plan on how to build things in downtown Florence. The man, you've never been in a meeting of greatness until you've sat there with Hugh Leatherman on one side and Eddie Floyd on the other. I guarantee you that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, board members, for taking the action you've put today. Let me talk briefly about the forestry program, which I think we all believe strongly in. I want to thank the board for approving that program today. We'll go forward with that. I'm going to talk just in a second about our appropriations coming out of the Ways and Means Committee, but things look right for beginning that program hopefully in fall of 2023. I will tell you that Darta Moore has told me that she intends to be a pretty strong proponent for that program as we go forward. Now, there are a number of ways that you can interpret strong, being a strong advocate or proponent. With Ms. Moore, that usually means that she'll be willing to put some of her philanthropy support behind her orders. That's certainly been the case in the past. So we'll go forward with that and continue to do the things necessary to get that degree approved at the state level. Let me talk very, very briefly about where we stand with state appropriations coming out of the Ways and Means Committee. Please understand now, the House, the whole House hasn't taken up the Ways and Means bill, but coming out of the committee itself, the committee fully funded our request for a forestry building at 18 million dollars. So, you know, usually we get some support on the House side, and we would get the rest of support on the Senate side. In this case, Ways and Means chose to fully fund the 18 million for the forestry building. They've also provided us, at least in the Ways and Means bill, 2.5 billion for tuition mitigation money, recurring money essentially to embed some of our operating expenses as we go down the road. One other thing that's contained in that bill coming out of Ways and Means, they included funding for a sled regional office. Senator Leatherman and Chief Mark Keel and I reached agreement last fall that if Ways and Means in the House and Senate funded that sled regional office, that we would find a location for them on our campus, that we would provide land on our campus for sled to locate their regional office, just as the Department of Natural Resources located their regional office a decade ago. So I'm pleased to tell you, it looks as though, at least at this point, the budgetary project, that we may very well be able to add sled as one of our working state government partners on our campus. There'll be enormous asset to us, not just from the standpoint of the centrality of other state entities with us, but the internships and work study opportunities that our students will be able to derive from having that office on campus. By the way, there'll be about 30 sled agents that will work out of that office across the PD regions in South Carolina. Mr. Chairman, you'll note we're not wearing masks this afternoon. We took another step in mitigating some of our COVID protocols this past week. And while masks are still required in classrooms and medical facilities, public transportation, and instructional support spaces on campus, we facilities, public transportation, and instructional support spaces on campus, we, we've relaxed the mask-wearing in entertainment, recreational, assembly spaces and the like. We're getting there. Florence is still a high transmission area, according to the CDC data currently posted, which, which Darryl and I discovered is now about ten days old. We think it's likely within the next week to two to three that we'll be able to further relax mask standards on campus. We'll just wait and see how that turns out, and we'll continue to monitor the active COVID cases that exist at the area and on campus. I will tell you that we've gone down about five days without a single COVID case on campus, and the last date in which we had double-digit COVID cases was February the second. Dr. Kennedy, are you back there?
Yes, sir.
I believe that's correct.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I do want to say a word or two about our women's basketball team. They, they made it to the quarterfinals. As, as Karen reminded us, as Trustee Leatherman reminded us, they will play tomorrow night at the Richardson Center in Spartanburg. The game's at eight-thirty. If you can get there, our athletic director has assured me that he'll provide prime seating. I asked him if he would drive people up, he stopped short of that, but I can guarantee you the tickets. Please come if you can. Finally, Mr. Chairman, I would invite everybody to come to the Alumni Awards Ceremony down the street at the PAC. That starts, the reception starts, I think, Lee, in about an hour, and I will tell you, without giving away the surprise, two members of our board will be, will be honored tonight at those Alumni Awards, and we're very, very excited about that. That ends my report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. Any questions, Dr. Carter? Hearing none, I'm not aware of any unfinished business, this is the executive session. By, by way of, of new business, there is a moment I do want to discuss with you. Since our last meeting, we have lost two of our members of our board, Chairman Leatherman and Frank Elmore. Senator Leatherman, as we all know, was, they have been short in statute, but he was a giant in this state. But when I think about him, I don't think about all the stuff he did outside here, I think about him as, as the contribution to this board. And, and that's how, and he took his trusteeship, be it emeritus, he took it serious. And when he was able, he was here, and he participated, and he took his, you know, his degree from Francis Marion, it's not just another thing to hang on his wall, but we were his, and he was ours. And so, you know, he is someone who we will miss, and I will tell you, the executive committee will be looking for a way, that he has been honored across the state for all kinds of contributions. One of the things he's never been recognized for, which we're looking for a way to do that, and executive will bring you the way to recognize him for his trusteeship and the service that he had to this board and to this university in that role. So that will be forthcoming. The other thing is Frank, after five years, lost his battle with lung cancer. Frank, whether you know it or not, was one of the leading construction lawyers in the state, and he, he grew up on the south side, the south, on the south side, you know, went to law school and, you know, kind of never looked back. And he always credited Francis Marion for giving him that, that push, and it changed the trajectory of his life and his career. Several times over his illness, he considered whether he should resign or whether he should continue to try to participate, and he participated physically as long as he could to make a contribution because it was that important to him. So, you know, we have now lost those two people on our board, and before we, as we adjourn, I'm going to ask, we'll take a moment of silence to remember both of them, and then we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you. We'll stand adjourned.